Good evening. I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order on Monday, November 24th at 6 o'clock. So for the record, all council members are present, including the Vice Mayor. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? But first, I do want to pull item 16B1 to up after item 10, which is before consent. Apparently, the Roundup owners will be here, present at 7 o'clock, so might as well start the meeting out well. And if they're not here, we'll move it back until where it is. Any other changes?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Now, we will... Do we have any public comment for items on the closed session item only? All right, no public comment? And now we'll go into closed session. We'll be back at 7 o'clock.
We'll call the city council meeting back to order and we have no actionable report from our closed session item. And now will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so next is item eight, public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any items for not on the agenda?
Yes, we do. We have public speaker James Shario.
Yeah, I have a concern about pedestrian safety on Lafayette-Maraga Trail because I walk on the trail every day.
Could you please, um, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have a concern about pedestrian safety on Lafayette-Maraga Trail because I walk on the trail every day, especially from Stanley to our community center. Uh, the kids, you know, they go like 30 miles per hour, whatever, you know, the, with the big pad tire tires, you know, EV e-bikes, they just zoom through it. Today I was walking, one kid was doing the wheelie right next to me. It's pretty dangerous, you know, they hit me, I'm gone. So this is not really affecting the pedestrians. These, you know, these kids, they don't obey the rules like a stop sign. It's just like an ornamental sign, they just pass through it without even looking at the traffic. So it's affecting the, uh, you know, the cross street traffic also, you know, it could hit somebody. I, I saw a very close call the other day because it is good, just passing through it and it just, there is no side distance for the cross traffic. So my suggestion is do some deterrence like a vehicle speed monitoring system, solar powered. I mean, it's just my suggestion. You have one on, from Campbell into high school to the Lafayette, like this way, Maraga Road. There is one sign there, you know, speed limit, so do some, some baby steps. Uh, it's, it's not going to cost probably around $80,000, you know. So you have a camera and the speed, your speed limit, you're violating the. So that's my suggestion. So the cost is based on my experience, you know, I had a project on state highway, conventional highway. So at the time, about six years ago, one sign cost about, you know, $40,000, of course, it was the 22 signs. So now probably one sign, probably around, I would say $60,000, $70,000. This is my suggestion to do some, something because it just, uh, hope I'm wrong because this, uh, there's going to be an accident, it's going to happen. It's not a, it's not an if question, it's going to be when question because we don't have any control. So hope I am wrong.
Oh, thank you. Any questions, Speaker? No, thank you for your suggestion. It's always helpful to have somebody come up and, and talk about something, but offer a possible solution. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other?
I have another speaker here, BL Moore.
Hi, good evening. I'm just here to introduce myself. I am about two, less than two months into my position with PG&E and I believe I've sent emails to all of you to introduce myself. And of course I've met with the city manager. I just wanted to make sure you know I'm your point of contact and certainly my email that I sent to you has my cell phone number. Uh, feel free to reach out and it's really nice to see everybody.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come in and visit us personally. Appreciate that.
I do have one speaker on Zoom. It is Libby Henry. Um, go ahead, Ms. Henry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hi, everybody. Uh, I wanted to just speak tonight because I know it's not on the agenda. Um, I believe that Joanne received this letter and packet from Susan Kirsch from Catalyst. Um, and I hope that she forwarded it to all the city council members about Plan Bay Area 2050. And I would urge all city council members to look at this. Um, Catalyst has prepared a sample letter, uh, all, um, uh, public comment, um, from, from anyone is due by December 18th on this egregious plan. They are, you know, just for an example, the population growth that they are projecting between now and 2050 is based on a 24% increase. And I think you all know that in reality and in fact, that has not been the case. And there are several documentations that prove that this projection is way off. Um, and I was just on a meeting earlier and the projection of how mu- And I was just on a meeting earlier and the projection of how much tax money this would cost each and every person in the Bay Area, should they go through with as planned, would be a hundred thousand dollars a year for every person, that includes children that lives in the Bay Area. So it's obviously a very ill-conceived plan. And we need to let MTC and ABAG know that this shouldn't fly. And I know a hundred and one cities in this jurisdiction, in the Bay Area jurisdiction, have been sent this package. So I hope that you will read it and respond, you know, respond to the MTC before December eighteenth. And if you have any questions, you can always ask me.
Thank you. Um, Libby, just for the record, our next legislative subcommittee, we are going to discuss it and bring something, and we have time to bring it back at the next council meeting and send it in before the deadline. So yes, we are aware of it and we will be discussing it.
Okay, but take a look at the, you know, what they did on Catalyst.
Thank you.
They, there's a good analysis and it breaks it down into simple, you know.
Yeah, we will, we will, we will, Libby, I promise. Appreciate this very much.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, any other?
I have no other speakers.
Okay, great. So we have the city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, it's a short update. As you probably have all seen, artist Rachel Pearls is putting the final touches on the new mural on the wall of Zara's Boutique in downtown. And there have been a few weather-related delays, but we're hopeful that it will be completed by the end of the month or shortly thereafter. An official unveiling of the mural is scheduled for January the twenty-sixth and more details to follow. The engineering department just wants to alert people that we've hired a tree company to perform the tree removal portion of the school and topper lane project. Tree removals are being deliberately performed in the fall and winter ahead of construction, also and also to mitigate any environmental concerns and restrictions associated with nesting birds. This is the time to do it. And finally, on behalf of city staff, we wish our council and the entire Lafayette community a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are going to move on. We pulled item sixteen B one about the proclamation honoring the Roundup Saloon on its ninety years of operation. And recognizing it's the oldest continuously running business in Lafayette, we've moved it up to this point in the, in the agenda. And our city manager will introduce our owners.
It gives me great pleasure to introduce Karen and Mike Johnson. They have been part of the Roundup organization for many years and have really truly done a tremendous job of keeping this iconic institution flourishing. So hand it back to you.
Great, thank you. So we have this wonderful resolution and I don't usually read these, but I will read this and then I would love to have you guys come up and say any comments and then get a photo of all of us. That would be amazing. So this proclamation reads, "The City of Lafayette, California, whereas the Roundup Saloon, established in nineteen thirty-five, just after the end of prohibition, stands at Lafayette, as Lafayette's oldest continuously operating business. And whereas for ninety years, the Roundup has welcomed residents and visitors alike, serving as a gathering place where stories are shared, friendships are formed, and the spirit of community thrives. And whereas the saloon's origins trace back to the founder Lou Borgenzani, whose original hitching posts, water trough, and famous promise that every horse got a carrot and every rider got a beer reflect the character of early Lafayette. And whereas successive owners from Harry Costa and JW Johnny Coombs to Bill McCabe, Mike Content, and today's owners Karen Kirchner and Mike Johnson, each contributed to the Roundup's enduring identity as a welcoming hometown institution. And whereas the Roundup Saloon continues to preserve its historic charm from its shuffleboard table to its vintage decor, offering a warm and familiar place for generations of Lafayette residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the Lafayette City Council, it is my pleasure to recognize and celebrate the ninetieth anniversary of the Roundup Saloon, honoring its rich history, its vibrant role in our community, and its continued legacy as a cornerstone of Lafayette life." Thank you so much. So please, if you have anything to say, we'd love to hear from you.
And just before, to make it super official, I move approval of the proclamation.
Any, I'll, a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We just wanted to say thank you so much. The city has been so supportive and helpful with, we've been owners now twenty-two years. So basically, just thank you.
Same thing. I just can't thank everybody for the support that, you know, from the city to the chamber to all the people that come, you know, year after year. And it's really, it's an honor to own that place and just to, it enriches my heart to see people come in and just have a good time. That's what I love to see.
You guys do it justice. Thank you so much for being the kind of owners that you are.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
All I will say is we were able to go to the Roundup, I think, I think the city manager was there to do a little picture because they were also members of the Lafayette Chamber for forty-five years. And so it's a very, you know, it's a long-standing institution and they're beloved and it's, it's, it's just, it's great to have you guys. I agree. A lot of changes happening in Lafayette, so everybody needs something that's just kind of reminds them of how things used to be. And the Roundup is it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So can we take a picture?
I don't have a scale, wait, no. Oh, thank you. We'll see you later, hopefully. Take care. Oh, thank you, guys.
Um, Madam Mayor, I, I think we have a hand raised. I don't, I don't know if they.
Will, will we take any public comment?
I'll see, it's Libby again. I'm not sure if her hand is still raised or ups for this. Okay, so is she's commenting or no? Yeah.
No.
So we'll see. We'll see if Libby. So Libby, you can speak.
Yeah, hello? Can you hear me?
Um, yes, is this on the Roundup proclamation?
I know. And I wanted to say congratulations to my, I didn't know that Mike and Karen were going to be there. And they, they've definitely, I've been in a Roundup for a long time and you know, they've definitely added a lot more class to the Roundup. I sure wish they'd get rid of the old deer heads, but you know. Anyway, and I also forgot to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Oh, thank you, Libby. And to you too. All right, so we can close that item. Thank you. Um, on to the consent calendar. Any changes to consent or pull any items? Any member of the public want to pull any items on the consent calendar? I don't think so, so.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now go to item twelve A, Old Business, with not Jonathan, but.
Go. All right. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. John Warshaw, Recreation Manager. Jonathan does send his apologies. He was able to make tonight's meeting. I'd like to provide a summary of item twelve A, which is an update on the synthetic infield turf feasibility at Buckeye Fields and the one-time rehabilitation package that we're, that we are proposing. So at the October twenty-seventh meeting, the city council approved the capital improvements for shared baseball and, and softball use at Buckeye Fields to be compliant with the California Fair Play Act. So following that action, staff worked with our engineering staff as well as consultants to take a deeper look into what it would take to install synthetic infield at Buckeye, since it is compatible with both baseball and also softball. And a couple of the key items that we, that we learned is the required engineering, design, and bid process would take six to nine months with a eight-to-twelve week construction timeline. In addition, synthetic turf would need to be paired with the Buckeye Patio and Drainage Project that we actually paused design for in twenty twenty-three due to lack of funding. So when you factor in the full project scope, which includes the Buckeye Patio and drainage upgrades as well as design, engineering, along with project management, the project total will exceed about one point two million dollars. So given the overall scope in a, in a absence of a dedicated funding source, synthetic turf at Buckeye remains a longer-term capital project versus one that we could have ready for the twenty twenty-six season. So in the meantime, staff evaluated the, all four fields and taking it into account feedback that we've received from the user groups. And we kind of came up with a package of improvements such as fixing grading issues on the infields across all the fields, sod replacement to address the transitions between the infield grass and, sorry, the infield and the outfield grass, as well as that will also fix a lot of the dimension issues that we have with our infields currently, which is present across all of our fields. Complete infield mix rehabilitation at upper community park as well as infield turf renovation at lower community park. So the, the costs and specific items are kind of detailed in the staff report. But all these improvements would benefit both baseball and also softball. So we currently have a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the ball rehabilitation fund and staff is requesting authorization to release eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, which does include a five percent contingency amount in there to complete the rehabilitation effort ahead of the twenty twenty-six season. So thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. And, and thank you for explaining, taking over for Jonathan while he's not here.
Not a problem.
Do we have any questions?
Thank you. That, that makes, makes a lot of sense and it seems like it's a good use of, use of the funds. There was a, there's a kind of comment at the bottom of page three on the staff report, which talks about how the staff proposes the user groups, which I'm assuming this means LMYA and Little League, will resume responsibility for ongoing grass infield maintenance and long-term renovation. Have the leagues, have they agreed to that or is that just a proposal?
So typically, the, the leagues do take care of pretty much the infield, a part of their kind of daily use of it. So Little League has indicated that they will be continuing to maintain the infield grasses at the, currently the, the two that have infield grass. And LMYA will also be, you know, helping with, you know, infield dirt prep as well as Little League too. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, just to segue off that question, and now the staff report talks about bringing all fields up to a clean baseline. So the idea is to sort of bring them sort of up to snuff, so to speak. And then after that, we all kind of, we're operating off the same standard essentially for all the fields? Is that the, the concept here?
Yeah, the concept is to get them to a good starting spot, which will also in turn help the user groups with the kind of their, their core, you know, basically infield preparation.
Right.
Right now, a lot of the infield dimensions across all the fields are, are just inconsistent.
Okay. So this should help facilitate ongoing maintenance.
Yes, it definitely will, yes.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? All right, any public comment?
I have no public comment.
Okay, I, we did float this by the user groups already and we heard back from both and they both are also in favor. Little League and LMYA were both.
Yeah, we could ask John just to give a one-minute report on what happened on Friday.
Oh, that's right. You had another meeting on Friday.
Yeah, myself, Jesus Fernandez, which is the Parks Maintenance Supervisor, and also Jonathan, we met with both groups. Both are supportive of the, you know, the proposal that we're setting forth. Each group does have kind of, you know, they have their, I think their facility wish lists that, you know, that will kind of be evaluated between Jonathan, probably, you know, a commission and also between the two of them. But, you know, both groups are supportive of the, kind of the actions that we're proposing.
Great, thank you. So do I have a motion or any other comments or concerns? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move authorization of release of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars from the Ball Field Rehabilitation Sinking Fund to support the payments or the improvements shown in the staff report.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. And thank you guys for all the work. This was a lot of quick work and quick action by the Park and Reg Department to kind of come up with the plan and, and figure out all the, the money involved. So thank you. Make sure to tell Jonathan too.
I will. Thank you very much.
Cool. And Karen and Mike, you guys don't have to stay for the meeting?
No.
All right, so now we go on to item thirteen A. About the Park Theater.
Thank you, Mayor. As we are all aware and quite excited about, the Park Theater is undergoing renovation. And because it's a project that will last upwards of twelve, twelve or eighteen months, and because it's such a constricted, constrained site, the trust has requested the use of the front sidewalk and the parking spaces in front of the Park Theater for construction purposes. And our codes require that any private development pay for the cost of using those facilities. However, the code also allows the city council to accept, provide an exception to the payment of those fees as well as the encroachment permit issuance fee. And the Park Theater Trust has requested such relief from you. Staff has looked at the code and we believe we can make the findings to grant this exception to the payment of fees. The monies collected would go, the money saved would go directly towards the rehabilitation of the Park Theater. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I just want to just disclose before we start the, the discussion. So I am a non-compensated board member on the Park Theater Trust Board, which is a nonprofit board. And because of that and because it's for the benefit of the city, there is no conflict. I will be participating in the discussions and the vote. And I've chatted with the city attorney and chief in agreement.
Thank you for disclosing that. All right, do we have any questions? About the proposal?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just a general question, Mayor, thank you. For city manager, because my understanding is that, and this is before I was on the council, but some four years ago, the city made a contribution towards the Park Theater Trust of about a half a million or so. So we're already sort of an investor, as it were, in this project. Is that?
That is correct. The, the city did contribute five hundred thousand towards the purchase and rehabilitation of the Park Theater.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any public comments? Do any of you want to say anything? No? Okay, go ahead. Got it. And nobody, okay, great, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, please.
If I, I could.
Make a comment.
Make a quick comment. I, I guess I want to, I want to be careful about this being deemed as establishing a precedent whereby the city kind of forgives these fees that are already in our statute, if you will. I think in this case, in as much as we're already, as a city, invested in this project.
Yes.
So for us to sort of kick in five hundred thousand and then on, in one year and then several years later, take back two hundred thousand doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So I think in effect, this is, I, who knows what's in the future, but in this case, it seemed like this is kind of a unique situation, seemed like this is kind of a unique situation, which in my view would warrant us acceding to the request here.
In fact, to follow up on that, have we done this before for any project that you know of? Not that we're aware of, and so this is really unique, this is, we are making a complete exception, but we have to make all these findings, which staff did a great job in making the findings, so appreciate that very much, yes.
Yeah, I will just say again, thanks to the staff work on this, because it does carve out the basis for making this finding, and it's meant to, it'll set a precedent, but it's not going to set a broad precedent. So with that, I'll move that the city council find the Park Theater renovation project accepted from the charges established by Chapter 3-2 of the Lafayette Municipal Code pursuant to Code Section 3205B to C, based upon a plan approved by the city engineer, and on the basis that the project functions as a city-sponsored activity that provides significant community-wide benefit.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you for bringing this to our attention. All right, so item now 13, no, yeah, 13B, one.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm handling this for Andy, who is out of town. The mayor and city staff have been attending a couple of meetings with Senator Grayson. He is really leading the efforts to, on wildfire mitigation and wildfire prevention within his district. And as part of those discussions, he asked us at the last meeting if cities and fire districts would submit to him a list of projects that, for wildfire mitigation. He wanted us to make sure that these were projects that were ongoing, so, and also that projects that could, were coordinated with our fire agencies. And Andy met with city staff, with all the departments, and has culled a list of proposed projects. They are focused on brush clearing and tree removal in, along major evacuation routes, concerted effort on Muraga Road next year, and then a more, a larger project for the following three years. In addition, there are two other smaller projects. One of them is to create a pullout area on Spring Hill Road, which is one of our more vulnerable streets, to allow cars to pull over if there's, if emergency vehicles have to pass. Andy worked with Mike Moran, they walked the road, and the cost estimates do come within contingency. And finally, the last request is to create something that I believe Marin County is, has done, which is to, to collect safety cones and barricades, things that one would need during an emergency, to strategically place these materials in an enclosed container at different locations throughout the city, because if there is a fire, we really don't have the time to wait for Public Works to drive those over. We still don't have the exact details about the aesthetics of the box, but we'll definitely work on that. But it's, it's recommended as, it's one of the best practices to get ready for an emergency. So we ask that you approve these lists of projects, and so that we can submit it to Senator Grayson's office before the December 1 deadline.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I spoke with Andy today, but I forgot to ask him, are these in order of priority? Are we to submit them in order of priority?
No, they were, we did not prioritize them.
Okay, thank you.
I did have a question about the aesthetics of the box, because I can imagine that would be, depending on how big this box is, if it was carrying, containing cones, that seems pretty small, but if it's containing all the barricade things, it'd be kind of large.
Yeah, it, as I understand it, it does not include the major, the concrete or the orange barricades, they are more stop signs, cones, things that can be quickly laid out to make an intersection of four-way stop, for example.
I was wondering if the, if the amount included the, almost 17 copies of all those materials, but I guess if just cones or whatever, that's probably relatively, relatively expensive.
Exactly.
And then a question, maybe it's to this group, so are we aware of the, the Spring Hill neighborhood can be kind of active and vocal on stuff? Do you know, or do they, do you have any idea if they would be, how they would like the poll?
Did he speak to Paul or do you think?
I don't know.
Don't know.
I can follow up with him.
I just don't know.
They are so ahead on all the fire stuff, I cannot imagine that there's been pushback on this one. Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, this is fabulous, this is really, really great, and I appreciate the opportunity that Senator's given. Did they give any kind of ballpark, like ask for half a million and we'll consider or?
No, they did not, I don't think they gave us a range. I suspect the fire districts are going to ask for a whole lot more.
Okay, so this is a good ask, we didn't ask for too little.
Don't think so.
Yeah, because smart signals are still coming, right? And that would be the other piece, but that's already in progress.
That's right.
Right? So I had one other thing that kind of, I know we've talked about, haven't really done, is, you know, on fire days is to have no parking zones. And I don't know if that is something that we need to ask money for, because that's, we just pay for it internally, and that's why maybe it didn't hit the list, but it is something that people have kind of talked about. If.
If the council wishes, we can, we can get an estimate and add it to the list. I, Mayor, are you talking about the evacuation routes or throughout the city?
Evacuation routes specifically, because I think that would have to involve signs and stuff like, other cities have done that, right? They've.
Arinda has done that, but is Arinda's just on evacuation routes? Or they have it, I think they have it on other streets as well. I think that's something we should, you know.
Maybe look in.
Yeah.
See if there's room.
Fairness can look at it.
This is a red flag, no parking respect?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have that in the safety element, and I think we'll need signs for those, so.
Yeah, the city attorney was just saying we would need signage.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Which is an expense.
Right.
Yeah.
Actually, I did have a follow-up question. I'm intrigued that the fact that Confire is probably asking for stuff as well. Do we know if they're asking for anything that's going to benefit us? Or are they asking for things that are just like?
We don't know yet.
Okay, because it'd be good to see, and/or, the other question I had, which I forgot to ask, was like, could we get like a letter? The question was, is Confire doing stuff that is going to benefit us also? Do we, are we aware of what they're asking for? Or do we think they're just asking for things outside of like city jurisdictions?
Unfortunately, we haven't heard back from Confire. They were, Andy was in touch with them. I suspect it's going to be shaded fuel breaks or something on the larger scale.
I'm sure it will benefit us indirectly.
Exactly.
The other question is, is it good to get a letter of support from Confire for these things, or does that really matter?
Together.
It was all one thing.
We're all, it's going.
Yeah, Andy's going to coordinate with Fire Marshal Bachman.
Yeah.
We're going to share our information with him. On the subject of the signs, and I don't know whether I can get an estimate by Monday, which is the deadline.
Oh, it's a deadline for the, okay, well, then that's fine, then that means no.
But it would also be hard to ask for funding for something that we haven't yet created the.
Ordinance for and all this stuff, right? So maybe that's the next year.
I guess that brings up another question, for these boxes near intersections, do we have any regulation that we need to watch out for in placing these boxes? I did talk to Andy about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Aesthetic scope.
There are 17 locations, Mike and Aziz helped Andy identify the locations, they're all on public property, and Public Works provided the pricing. I'm sure they'll take site distance and other things into consideration. But this is, of all the projects, this is the one we know the least about right now, because of the aesthetics. I mean, I'm particularly sensitive about adding stuff on our roads, but they could also be artistic or, yeah.
I can see.
I was thinking wraps.
Public art committee.
I was thinking that too, actually, yes.
Yeah.
This could work. Yeah, if we're gonna, I'm okay with sending it in this order, but if I were to prioritize, I'd put that one first. That just seems like a brilliant idea to pre-position all those things out there.
That's totally fair.
Yeah.
But I love the wrong road.
Anything, who knows?
Thing two, right? I'm sure Andy could probably, if he was asked by Grayson to prioritize them, I'm sure he could also do a fine job.
Yeah, I'll pass that on to Andy.
Yeah. Especially given the deadline. All right, so do we have any more questions or go to public comment? All right, public comment.
No public comment.
No public comment, all right, so do we have a motion?
Can I take a quick comment? I just want to, I think we've all said this in different ways, but I really want to thank Senator Grayson for this leadership in trying to engage with his constituencies for fire safety, which is just a huge check plus, certainly in my book. You know, the state's got some real financial issues going on the next fiscal year, so even if we get one or two things, that's, to me, is just a huge win. But you never get anything unless you ask for it, so.
So, and bundling it.
Thank you for asking us.
And bundling it as part of a trailer bill, because it's so well-packaged and thought through, is great.
So I support this.
All right, so do I have a motion? Or do we need anything, which is authorizing staff? Motion, okay, motion to authorize staff?
All some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Great, all right, so we're on to council commission reports. Does anybody have a report?
I'd like to bring up something if I could, just to start. As we all know, we had a couple more burglaries since we last met, unfortunately, in our downtown, downtown area. I think Zunis and, I think Zunis was, since we last met, and several others, and we, we had a, we, I know several of you attended the Zoom meeting, but I just want to kind of give you a little bit of backstory, because it's pretty amazing, right? The Zunis break-in happened on Saturday or Friday night into Saturday, and, you know, talking with the chamber, we decided, you know, we wanted to kind of get the word out to businesses about some safety tips, because it seemed like some of the businesses were, you know, there was some basic stuff that all businesses should do to kind of keep themselves safe. And this was on, so Sunday night, you know, we sent the word out to the chief, asking if you would be willing to participate. He said yes. I think Sunday night, May Monday morning, Kathy Serge sent out a, because we wanted something to give out to the businesses, she sent out this brochure that the police had passed, had created several years ago. The chamber took it, went to Minuteman, they had 140 of them printed out within eight hours, I think. On Tuesday morning, it was, what's Tuesday morning? Yeah, our city manager, Narup, and I, and Matt Pease, the president of the chamber, and Judy from the Crime Prevention Commission, got together a bunch of chamber staff, we distributed these to 140 businesses throughout downtown, all up and down Mount Diablo, so they all had this, invited them to the Zoom call, and I know many of you were on the Zoom call as well, so thank you very much. But this is an incredible quick turnaround. I mean, this is 72 hours after the break-in, we were like talking to businesses and giving them tips and everything, so I want to thank, I think Minuteman and the chamber in particular did a really outstanding job, as well as, of course, the police having this on hand, being able to do it. So I just wanted to recognize that, that effort to get that out before the Thanksgiving week. I also want to do a quick shout-out that on Veterans Day, we had the Tree of Hope lighting ceremony, and the mayor spoke of that, and she did a great job, and it was really nice, I think honoring, being able to honor the veterans as well as hospice and what it does, and lighting up Lafayette Circles, a terrific, it looks great, and then kind of a nice way to kind of kick off the holiday season.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. Move on. All right, we will go on to item 16B2, where we have another proclamation recognizing Barbara Papini as the 2025 Don Jenkins Service Award. I have this proclamation signed, and she has been a really wonderful resident of Lafayette, and she gets the 2025 Don Jenkins Service Award recipient. So thank you so much to Barbara. Any questions, comments? Any public comments? No, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing Barbara Papini as the 2025 Don Jenkins Service Award recipient for exceptional service to older adults in our community.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you. Now going on to item C1, there's a legislative committee meeting that we had, and our committee leader will take this one.
Right, so we have three items from the legislative committee. The first relates to the Polluters Pay Climate Superfund Bill, which is SB 687 and AB 1243, was submitted earlier in this, the first year of the legislative session, passed through the Senate Environmental Committee, became a two-year bill in effect, it was sort of held at judiciary. And as I understand it from talking to our lobbyist at Townsend Associates, the bill will be up at the Senate Judiciary Committee in January. If it passes through that, it goes to Senate Appropriations. If it passes through that, it just goes to the normal process that a bill would go through. If it gets stopped at either judiciary or appropriations, the author or authors can resubmit the bill, or maybe they might want to modify it, but they in effect have two bites at the apple, because it's a two-year bill. So we had a pretty extensive discussion about this, kind of concluded that kind of taking Townsend's opinion, which is to basically watch this, seemed to be the most prudent. It's a very complex bill and has some really big numbers behind it, I think, that just bear some better understanding, which is one reason why we decided to basically take, not recommend taking a position on it, but basically follow this bill and see where it might go, because this bill could come back in January even.
Great, thank you. So that was, we have, was that the only one? Oh, that's right, that was the only one that we took any action on.
Oh, there's three.
There was three.
Yeah, so, and this, I'm kind of speaking very broadly here, because we've got a write-up from our lobbyist, Townsend Public Affairs.
Yes, all right, thank you. Did anybody have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you mentioned that the complexity was one of the reasons to hold back. I mean, how large a part of that was holding was the reason for doing it, and how do you expect to resolve the complexity? That's question one.
Yeah.
And I'll, I assume that Casey's not on the line tonight?
No, he's not.
Okay, so I have a question. This is going to be facing the next committees in January, and that's a critical time for this bill. I realize it can be reintroduced, but then it has to go back through these things again. So my question is, would endorsements now, or was, was there any discussion of whether endorsements now would help the bill meet the January 2026 deadlines that is getting through judiciary and finance?
Well, I think that, question is, does it move the needle with respect to Senate Judiciary and appropriations?
Yeah, and just, I'm asking these questions because I'm generally in favor of this, supporting this, so I'm just, you know, trying to get a sense of what they, what's at stake here in terms of.
Yeah, and I think I could maybe speak to the issues I had, which is that, that there are some likely very large numbers behind this bill. I kind of went to the Senate staff report from the Environmental Quality Committee to see what their write-up was on the bill when it was heard back in April. They do reference, and this is in some of the other materials, that two other states approved something like this, Vermont and New York. In New York's case, the amount asked, or rather, to be paid by the quote polluters was 75 million, but the Senate staff report noted that the estimate was that the real number was probably something like 150 billion. And so there's nothing in the bill or the supporting materials that gets to what the number might be for California. I thought about it, well, California is roughly twice the population of New York, something, our gross domestic product is at least 50% higher, 50% higher than New York. Our climate issues might be greater conceivably, given the wildfires we've had relative to New York, of course, they have other things going on. But it seemed to me that if it was 150 billion for New York, California's case, it could be twice that or more. There's just no way of knowing, there's nothing in the write-up supporting the bill that indicates what the number is. So if, I figured, okay, if it's 250 billion, just putting just down a number, because that's roughly what, if you took New York's number multiplied by how much bigger our GDP is relative. because that's roughly what, if you took New York's number multiplied by how much bigger our GDP is relative to New York, that means that the first year one, it's, you pay 10, the polluters would pay 20, would pay 10%, so that's 25 billion year one, and in all subsequent years, it's 10% of the remainder, which is about 11, 12 billion a year. So to put that in context, California adopted a cap and trade system, which is also discussed later on in the Townsend write-up. It's established it's a bipartisan measure under Governor Schwarzenegger. That amount is roughly 4 billion a year. So what we're talking about with this measure could be, on an annual basis, three times that. In the first year, it would be, I guess, about four or five times that. And again, we don't know the numbers. I'm just kind of like spitballing here. But again, just if, if you take New York, it's like one data point, and always the danger is you take two points, you create a line, but you look at that. The California numbers ought to be bigger than New York. They're going to be big. And one of the concerns I had was not knowing what the financial implications were is significant, was something of this magnitude. And the other part of it is that there has, I would think, has to be some sort of an impact on consumers, whether you're paying for electricity, gas, or gasoline. And I've had some conversations with one of the local supporters of this, because there is a state entity, the Division of Petroleum Market Oversight, which is created in recent regulation, having to do when gas prices spiked. It was initiated by Governor Newsom in the legislature. But their job has really been more to sort of monitor what's going on with the refineries. Because there was a case where some refinery shut down, and there was a spike in the cost for refined, refined petroleum products. So this board oversees that to try to ensure that if a refinery shuts down, they've got adequate inventory. And there was something in there about a maximum gross refining margin, which really doesn't speak to this bill at all. So I think that there's a really open question as to how much of the financial implication gets passed on to consumers. The advocates of the bill in their letters have said it wouldn't be. But when you're talking on the order of, went year one, 25 billion, years thereafter, say 12-ish billion, again, my rough numbers, I don't see how you could just make that assumption. So my concern was that unless we had better figures from the proponents as to what this actually means, the cost implications are huge. And in an environment where now everybody, from our president on down, is talking about affordability, in a state where we have the highest electricity rates in the United, in the continental United States, we're twice the national average, and our gas prices, I haven't double-checked this, are among the highest, if not the highest, of the continental United States. That's a lot to potentially pass on to consumers. So that was my caution, this is like, I'm kind of a numbers guy. I have no feel for what the numbers are here, except that they are in the Bs, billions, and likely multiples of what we're doing for cap and trade right now, which is a system that we adopted to try to help mitigate climate impact and encourage polluters, or carbon emitters, I should say, to, to improve their behavior. We have that now. You could argue whether that's enough, but we have that now. This is trying to go back in time to sort of remedy the past damage that was caused, which is, I think, fair and legitimate. But I look at that and think, well, in some respects, even though I have, we have two electric vehicles and solar on our roof, I contributed to the problem, because I consumed carbon over the last 30-odd years. We all did. So I, I kind of think, I, I have all these questions from this bill that I think are just, needed to be a lot better analyzed, I think, before, at least I feel comfortable supporting it. So the idea of, like, let's take a wait and see, and see if we get better information on this, which is something that seemed intuitively to me to make sense.
It was, it was a long conversation.
Yeah, I did, I did not mean to get into the discussion. So let me come back to the question. Is there any sense of whether endorsements now would help the bill meet the January deadline?
Casey did not seem to indicate that. Narup was there too. He, he didn't think that are weighing in now, because I was thinking, how about a support in concept or something? Support in concept, that was exactly what I brought up, and he's like, you know, no, I mean, it really needs to go through these hurdles to get more, so we can figure it out a little bit more before you guys probably should weigh in. And, but I, but I do want to follow this. We're, we're on this, and we're very interested.
I will follow up on Jim's comments when we come back from public comment.
Any public comment? No, I see a no.
Okay. All right, well, I, I see the, the cap and trade as being entirely different. Cap and trade is the market for the emitters.
Right.
It is not for the, the producers and the suppliers. I mean, this goes to the, those who produce and supply the product that results in the CO2. The other one is among the emitters who are buying the product and using it in their manufacturing, and trying to encourage them to use less or to use it in a productive way. So I see whatever monetary gain comes from that to be completely separate from what's trying to accomplish here, which is trying to get those who have been over the last century and more producing these fossil fuels and supplying them to the market, and not to the same extent as the tobacco industry, but dealing in misinformation and other techniques to try to perpetuate their, the market for their product. So I see this as being something that's desirable to do. And I think that a city like ours, in Maraga and Arinda, as we are situated where we are bearing the brunt of climate change in the form of increased danger of wildfire, that this would be something that would be, that we would take a great interest in. So as you were describing it, I wrote down, can we approve this in concept? Can we support in concept, say, we're, we want to get more information, but, you know, we're, we support, we, in concept, we support it, but we need more information. I mean, if we were to.
We can do that. We can do that.
Where I would be.
I have to admit, so I'm actually much more sympathetic the other way, I should admit. I mean, I think conceptually, I, I actually am, I'm very concerned. I do not trust the whole, let's, this, this, find them a lot of money and don't pass on to consumers. I just think that they're, they're just, the, the companies are too good at this, and I just, I, I like the, the holdback, only because I'd like to see some numbers. I'd like to see, was it going to mean to the average person's gas tank fill-up, you know? I just feel like, it's just like, we're already, I believe in the, in the East Bay Times on Sunday, they were comparing our, the average price of a gallon of gas in the country, which is 336, and our, and California, which is 482, or something like that. I mean, it's just like, we're already 50% higher, I think. And so I just think we need to see that. I would just need to understand kind of what it needs to do, because I just don't want to, I just feel like if we, if we, we find them, they're just going to, there's, there's only one place to get the money. It's from the people buying their product, you know? So that, that was my, my big concern, and it's just such a weird, it's such a big bill with no numbers. I mean, how, how in the world can you, I mean, conceptually, yes, I, I guess I would support it, but it's like, you have to know the numbers before you can really like do one way or the other. So I guess I would look forward to getting the numbers, which it sounds like January, February, March is when they're going to be kind of sussing all that out? Or are we going to get numbers then? I don't know.
I, I talked to Casey Elliott, our lobbyist, and he said, it might, might be possible in appropriations, if there might be some way to suss that out. I mean, the focus of the Senate and Assembly Appropriations Committee is more like, what's the impact on the state? But they'd need to sort of figure out, they'd have to get some markers on that, it would seem. The, the bill does talk about having CalEPA do a initiated study. The, the timeframes in the bill are really rapid. I mean, by the time they, the study's supposed to be out per this bill, I'd be surprised if they actually got the RFP out.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, maybe there's something out of appropriations. I don't know about judiciary.
Okay, any comments?
I always like data to make decisions, and so I think I would be happy to, to wait and see.
All right, so, but thank you, but we are going to be watching this one.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm.
Well, sure, and because I think there's enough people.
Yeah.
Here and in our community that have very strong feelings about this.
Yeah, when is the next meeting?
This is not on, this will have to wait until after those other meetings, and we don't know when those other meetings are yet, right? Appropriations and judiciary.
Oh, well, I was getting the sense that perhaps we could get more information on, on what the bill, what's in the bill, and what people have said in the hearings about impact on consumer. That seems to be the E.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I had for a lobbyist and today. And he said really that at this point, we're not going to get anything till January. They're kind of in hiatus there. We got some senators, like our, our senator, trying to move stuff along, but there's nothing, matter of fact, the Senate Pro Tem hasn't even named the new committee chairs yet. So we don't even know who's chairing judiciary at this point. So that's kind of where we are with the state senate right now. It's, it's not going to be till January before you see, see things happening on this, I think, to be realistic.
Okay, so are we good with the recommendations that we have, the no action?
Well, I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
From a vote, yeah. I'm not going to vote for it.
Are we, are we voting? Or we just, are you just recording?
Yeah, it's, it would be good to have a vote.
Yeah.
I think so too. It seems like it would be good to vote. So the recommendation came back as a no action, so do we have?
Yes, I, I guess it's a motion, so I'll move that the council endorsed the legislative committee's recommendation of no action with respect to Senate Bill 684.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'll be a no.
And, 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 no, okay, great, thank you.
It's one of our rare split votes.
And it's, you know, it's okay. It's okay. All right, so item C16C2.
Yeah, La Marinda Legislative Coalition, I, I could just tee this up and perhaps pass it to our city manager and mayor. But this follows on a prior council action to join in tandem with our neighbors in Arinda and Maraga to see if we could sort of team up for sort of a common approach to issues of common concern. And so there's a really detailed write-up in here of the, the framework for that, for the Legislative Coalition focusing on transportation and infrastructure, disaster repairness, wildfire readiness, accessible property insurance, housing, and fiscal sustainability, which are all like the good themes of local government here. And then behind that, we have our legislative platform. So the idea was to see if we could move it along, continuing with the council's direction from the prior meeting. And maybe that'll stop and defer to our city manager and mayor, who were involved in some of these discussions with our colleagues in our neighboring towns.
I'd, I'd just like to add that Arinda City Council approved the framework. Maraga will consider it in January.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, that was basically, we, we think that we'll keep Lafayette's, the way we organize it right now with a subcommittee, and then come back to council. At least for now, until we kind of work through this process.
I had a question, or?
Please, question.
So it was good. No, I thought it was great. One question, I kind of, there's only, you know, we have housing, and there's only one fairly tepid comment about Rena and the whole, that whole process. I kind of didn't know if we would have, La Marinda would have had, wanted to have a little more about the whole process reform, and you know, it was such a kind of a, a mess last year.
It's actually not a bad idea.
You know.
We didn't.
Line, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that was in our, our goals for the year, to work with Arinda and Maraga on the next cycle, getting ahead of the Rena.
It might be late to alter this one, because Arinda already approved it?
I can always float the idea. I mean, this is not something that's controversial. It, everyone has a problem.
We've all been, we've all been kind of tortured, you know, tortured, so. There's lots of opportunities for improvement. There may already be stuff going in through, through, I'm sure there is already going through that we can endorse, but just a thought.
So, okay.
The other one, I'm sorry, the one other one I was just wondering about, which makes for our own thing, is, you know, we're all struggling with e-bikes. This was a public comment today, and, you know, I mean, I, I've been endorsing, well, whatever Danville is doing or whatever, we should kind of follow that. But man, I would just love some statewide e-bike regulations to kind of get us out of this, get us, get us out of this morass and have, it'd be more. So I'm just wondering if we could be pushing for that, because that would just kind of give us a lot of air cover, and means people couldn't go, you know, to next town over and buy something or whatever, that the state could kind of put in some stuff. So it was just a thought.
There already are some actions, right, through Danville? There's a coalition.
There is. No, Danville's doing a good job.
Right?
We have just a bullet in the La Marinda framework. It says, "Increase safety for all users of roadways, including vehicles, e-bikes, pedestrians." It doesn't get.
No, it does cover it.
Specific than that.
Okay, I would just, I just think that would be a big help, because we're all going to be struggling. Makes no sense for us to have hundreds of individual conversations about this. I don't know. But that, that was all, otherwise I thought was a great framework.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, which page is that on?
Certainly, it's page two. Let me double-check that. No, let me.
Page one.
Page one, yeah. The two bullets are very close to each other. The third bullet.
Oh, okay, I see. Yep, okay, yeah, I was looking for it in the transportation section.
It's on page, there's like other related topics kind of section on page nine, sorry, I didn't know if that was, but.
Yeah.
That's kind of what, that's the only place I found it, but.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? No, any public comment?
Do have one question.
Oh, please, one more, please.
I didn't understand one. On page four of legislative platform, it is Public Health and Safety, number two.
Is that an hour?
Is it Lafayette's?
Lafayette's. It must be in Lafayette's.
Yeah, Lafayette.
Yeah.
Okay, if you can flag that for us, the next Ledge Committee will be updating our framework in January. So please do let us know what it is.
Oh, I just didn't understand what it was.
Oh, okay.
That's all. It looks like it's a COVID-era thing. It says, "Opposing legislation that constrains the ability of local counties or cities during a public health emergencies to make determinations regarding closures based on local conditions."
It probably was a COVID era, but I need to go back to see why we kept it, rather than removing it.
Okay.
But thank you for that.
Great, thank you. All right. All right, any other? Yes, I would, I'll take a motion, thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll move adoption of the La Marinda Legislative Framework as amended.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you for staff and Casey, and all the other cities for putting this together. It should be great, it should be really good moving forward. All right, so in the 2025 Legislative End of Session Review, 16C3.
And I'll just reference that Townsend prepared a pretty extensive digest or recap of the 2025 legislative session. There's some interesting items in here. So it's basically, they presented it, along with, in the back, we've got the various bills we were tracking at different points. I think the highlight, not lowlight for us, was SB 79, but there's a lot of stuff going on in the legislature this year, and I think it's helpful for our city to have a committee to help track all this, because keeping an eye out on what's going on in Sacramento is important.
Any questions?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you for all that you're doing to try to make sense of, of what these bills are up to as they pass through a really complicated process. Yes.
I think it helps having a lobbyist in Sacramento, who knows? I mean, was chatting with him, and he was at some event, and former speaker and mayor of Sacramento, Daryl Steinberg, was there. It's all a small community up there.
Yeah.
So it really helps to have someone on, boots on the ground. So it's a big, big plus for us.
All right, any public comment on that one? Nope, okay, great. So we receive and file. Thank you. All right, so now we get to go to the fun ones. All right, so this is Mayor Candell, Vice Mayor Anduri, Sixth Amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement with Narup Svarvatsa, our city manager. So we met with her on, oh gosh, what day was that? Last week, yes, sorry, it's just so many things going on right now. And with the recommendation that the council had come with in order to give Narup a 5% raise, you know, it'll be backdated back to, to start of the fiscal year, and to give her annual report, and thank her for her amazing service to our city. So we have the sixth, and we had to create, we had to get the Fifth Amendment, and then also add the new Sixth Amendment that reflects the change of salary. So have any questions? Any public comment? Any comments from anybody here? Yes.
I would love to do a comment. I just think we're so fortunate to have Narup heading us up, and I think I mentioned this in our internal meeting, I mean, we are such a young council right now, right? Unusually for Lafayette, right? And we need, yeah, you know, present company definitely included. And so I think just having, you know, somebody with a lot of experience and steady hand is so helpful that it just, it just makes us work so much better, because we're all kind of, we're all trying to still figure things out, and at least. we're all trying to still figure things out, and at least I am. And so it's very, very brought to appreciate it.
Yeah, I was just reflecting generally how, for a city, a small town of 26,000 people, we're really lucky to have someone, the abilities of Narup heading up our team as city manager. And we're lucky in each of our senior positions in the city. I mean, imagine, we're a small city, and we have these very talented individuals as our assistant city managers, our public works, planning, it's just, it's just amazing.
Yes. We are very fortunate, so thank you.
If I could, on a piggyback on what Vice Mayor Anduri said, which is like, I think back on my 34 years in public finance, working with scores of people in public management, city managers, finance managers, all the way up and down the line. And we are very fortunate to have you all with this community. I think that Lafayette is so well-served. And anytime I talk to someone about, well, they ask me how it's going, I said, we've got a great council, and we have great public management. And it's, when you have that working together, which I think this city does, we do, we can do really great things. So just to thank you, to you as city manager, Tracy to you as well, and Mala, and really the whole team that you work with for making the city a great place to live. And it's been a real pleasure, and I really want to say thank you all.
Well, I'd like to also say thank you, thank you so much, Narup. I think I've always found that working with any member, every member of the city staff has always just been such a pleasure. Everyone is just so, so smart and really happy to be working on behalf of residents. And I'm sure that that comes from the top. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So do I have a motion?
Okay, with that, I'll move that the council authorize the mayor to execute the attached Sixth Amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement with Narup Svarvatsa.
I'll second. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Enthusiastic aye, thank you.
Thank you, and I just do want to thank you from the bottom of my heart and say, it's because of you. It wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here if this was not a collaborative relationship. So thank you.
Thank you. And our last is a letter from George Fagone, resigning from the Emergency Preparedness Commission. We do accept it with regret, and thank you so much for 13 years of volunteer service on the Emergency Preparedness Commission. All right, do you have a comment?
May I say a word?
Please.
So as the council liaison to the Emergency Preparedness Committee, I wanted to say a few things on behalf of George to thank him, piggybacking on what the mayor said, in that when you serve as a commissioner, and I think in this community, which I think almost all of us have, a different, away from the council, it's a labor of love, and you're doing something for the community in these specialized areas. And I talked several times with the chair of the commission, Duncan Seabert, who kind of passed on some really remarkable things that George did working with Duncan, which is, and I didn't know this before, but I have this app on my phone from Genesys, this company that basically shows you every single evacuation area in the state of California. In my case, I'm Lafayette 004. That's all started with Duncan and George doing the work to define evacuation zones in the city of Lafayette. So that all began with a local effort. I think they expanded it to Arinda. It got picked up by a company called Zone Haven.
Right.
And Zone Haven sort of expanded it, taking that same logic of like, how do you define evacuation zones? And then Genesys sort of picked it up from there. So on this map, on this app, I should say, this entire state is covered with evacuation zones, which is the channel by which evacuation notices go out to almost every community in the state of California. It kind of started here, which is mind-blowing to me. And it just made me think, wow, this is an effort of two commissioners in the city of Lafayette to try to come up with something to address an issue here. And that grew and grew and grew. It's sort of like out of the tiny acorn, a mighty oak grows. And that's what George did, working with Duncan. So I think we all owe him just a real debt of gratitude and appreciation. He leaves the commission, I think, probably better than he found it. And we'll have a new person coming on board at some point. But it just like goes to show that one individual in a smallish community like ours can do things that have a humongous ripple effect, and that's what he did. So I really, so I don't know, George, if you're watching, but thank you. Your service to Lafayette is so much appreciated.
Wow, thank you for sharing. That is an incredible story. Any other comments? Do we have any public comment? So again, thank you so much, George, and also Duncan, especially for all the work that you've done. And now lastly, we'll adjourn in honor of the roundup.